So I think we'll just jump right into that. And I'm not sure who's operating the PowerPoint, but I guess I'm betting it's Sheila. So if we could go to the, probably the second slide. And we'll jump into this. Jim, do you want to kick us off?
Sure, thanks Jeff. Sorry, couldn't be in attendance this evening. But we did get numbers from your construction manager at risk last week. The wastewater treatment plant construction project, the number they gave, which is the 60% number, is 25,600,000. And then we're also looking at design engineering and construction management for a total of about 2.4 million. So we're still at the $28 million price tag for the project. And so we're, you know, kind of go through the funding package that we're looking at at this point. If we go ahead and put the application in by June 15th, which is Thursday, we're looking at approximately $8,125,000 of grants and principal forgiveness to be, come off that overall price tag. We're anticipating $7 million of principal forgiveness that is broken into two buckets, one being $5 million, which is from the infrastructure law, the bipartisan infrastructure law, $2 million, which is an allocation because Silt has been declared a disadvantaged community. Then we've added, this is something new, an additional $500,000 for emerging contaminants funding. And then there are other miscellaneous grants for an additional 750,000. One is a design and engineering grant. And the other is, and I always forget what the last one is, somebody could jump in and tell me that, but it's a total of 750-
Garfield County Federal Mineral Lease District.
I always knew Trey had the answer. So again, our total expected grant funding and forgivable pieces to the loan is about We are, I think the group is still looking for additional clarity on the funding sources that would offset the costs through the time where we have to set an actual borrowing amount. And, you know, we won't know the actual dollars that the CDPAG and the authority are going to provide until such time as we actually apply for, you know, the, put the application in for the loan. And then they'll come back and they'll, they'll work with us to come up with what that funding package is ultimately going to look like. But if we go to the next page-
Hey Jim, one thing I wanted to just throw out, because I think it's important, and I think I mentioned it somewhere in these materials, we're also looking at applying for another energy impact grant, which would free up, we think around $750,000 to invest in this project. And we won't know about that till the fall, but it is something that we're moving towards. And then I spoke with FMLD this morning, or this afternoon, Greg Rippey, and he said we would certainly not be precluded from applying for a second FMLD grant in the fall for this project. That's the 450 that Trey mentioned just a second ago, 450,000. So we might be able to apply, or we will be able to apply for the same project. He said that they generally don't award grants to the same project in two consecutive cycles or ever, but they never have $28 million projects either.
It's a little different project than what, it's not a park or a-
Right. He thinks that the board would certainly entertain, entertain us on that. So anyway, I wanted to throw that out. Sorry Jim, take it away.
No, no problem. So again, we're looking at the 60% C Mar number at the $25,600,000. We don't anticipate having the 90% number until sometime in September. As I said, we're looking at about eight and a quarter million principal forgiveness between grants, et cetera. And of that total amount, we know for certain that there's 750,000 that has been granted. On the right-hand side of the page, you can kind of see how we come up with what the bond sizing would ultimately look like. You've got the wastewater treatment plant project, which is again at that 60% C Mar number. You've got the design, engineering, and construction management at 2.4 million. And then you've got the various principal forgiveness or grant dollars that are used to offset those costs. So our subtotal is about $19,750,000. When we size an issue, and I size this issue based upon the same structure in terms of spread to one of the indexes that we use, that the last Colorado Water Resources and Power Development Authority bond issued at, so I used the same kind of parameters on that, and it generated a premium of about $1.8 million. And that's a dollar amount that when we issue debt, gets paid upfront to you in exchange for a slightly higher interest rate. And don't dwell on the interest rate at this point. But that's money that comes upfront, and we use that money to downsize the issue so that the net borrowing requirement drops down to about 17.9 million. Then we add in issuance expenses, and again, these issuance expenses are based upon the last issue that the authority did. And so we rounded it out to an $18,120,000 loan or bond size that would be dedicated to the town of Silt for this, this project. If you go to the next page, that gets us to really where the rubber meets the road, and what's the impact of a $28 million borrowing based upon where things stand? What's it going to be? Currently, your, your average customer is paying about $52 a month with the increase that you did in January. If you were to bring the, the operations of the utility up to where it needs to be to sustain the current operations, we would need to add about $43 additional, which leaves about $19 of that total $114 a month on the average customer that falls back to this water treatment project. And I think, you know, probably the number that I think the board has always been looking at is what's, every million dollars that we could knock off the, the price tag of this plant, what's it going to do for us? And it would, it would have an impact of about reducing that $114 by little over a dollar a month. And that's, that's basically where we are today in terms of where we anticipate, needing to take the rates to fund the project at its current, you know, makeup of a $25.6 million actual construction project, and then the additional 2.4 million for design, engineering, and construction management. And I would say that I, I understand that some of those dollars may have been spent already, but this is total project cost. And as, if you've paid cash for some of that design and engineering work, you can certainly be reimbursed for it, or you can reduce the amount of the ultimate borrowing that you're need, going to need to enter into to fund the project. And with that, that's, that's really kind of the summary of the finance aspect of where we are. I think, you know, it's important to note that when we originally started talking about this, we were north of $150 a month. And through the, the principal forgiveness and the grants that the, the team has been able to come up with, we've been, and also, you know, interest rates have regulated a certain amount, we've been able to bring that average cost down to about $114 a month.
Thanks Jim. And I know everybody's anxious to hear more about the two pages, two pieces of paper that are in front of you at your place, and how we're working to reduce costs further. Toby is here, and maybe Jared on the line too, and how they're working, basically to kind of explain that information that you have in front of you, and, and how they're working further. So Toby, can you step up and talk into the mic there so make sure we, everybody hears you okay?
Yeah, he's on Toby.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
Any surprises? Any surprises?
Probably walk us through it first before we can-
What's that?
Yeah, they haven't, they just saw it when it came in today, they haven't seen it till now.
All right. Well, this, what you're looking at is a summary of an estimate that we started on May 19th. We had about a two and a half week bid window, which was really, really tight. Dewberry busted their butt to get us documents, and our estimators busted their butts to, to, to get us a good estimate. That summary is the culmination of about 2,600 lines of estimate. That's what I've got sitting in front of me. So if there's any specific questions, I could probably drill down. The, everything is in there. The, the base project direct cost is about 19 million. Then there's some costs down below. We did kind of wag the, the building permit fee. The GC fee is in the contract, and then our bonds and insurance. And then below that, on the summary sheet, we have our allowances and contingencies. $50,000 budget for testing and quality assurance, that's compaction tests, subsurface testing, concrete testing, special inspections. We've got a number in there for off-site land lease. That's, this excavation's going to take a little more dirt to come out, and there's probably not enough land on the site, on the, the water treatment plant site to store And then we've got our two, at 60%, we always put a, we always have a contingency. This one being SRF, and I believe the, the state-
Sean and, what's the other gentleman's name?
Mark. They did suggest the 15%, I believe. And then we've got escalation costs, and that 5%, that's through the end of the year. So if we, if we go through 90%, and we can identify some escalation, not all of it, but some of it, then we should get out of there with probably half of that. If we stay on our current track. And that's using the Consumer Price Index escalator. So no contingency or allowance, we're at 21,580, 176. And our subtotal with everything all in is 25,627,869. In the other sheet, the 11 by 17, this is a, we do a value engineering list. And we'll have, we'll have more to add to this as we, as we refine the design. But these are some items that I'm going to call cherry picked out of the estimate that we probably assumed all pretty conservatively, I'd say. And this is not a complete list, this is the, the list I came up with after we got the estimate put together and sent to the town, and then we sat down and just ran through the estimate again, and looking for, for pieces, things that easily we could remove. Because the estimators have been to Silt. They have Google Earth, they have my descriptions and pictures, they have the plans, but they don't know the project like I do. So it was easy enough for, for Jared and I to go through this and generate this list. So the first one, building permit, you know, it's not, it's never a bad idea to recover some of your costs on the building permit, but I put the whole, the 200,000 in there. I think that's, that's probably pretty heavy. Then the off, the off-site land lease for, for dirt storage or staging. That was something that we never got together and, and talked about. It's just once we got the, that final yardage of dirt, and that's something we can talk about.
And we probably, they're probably not going to need that. We probably have enough room at the wastewater site to stockpile.
Good.
So-
Good.
That line item can, more than likely will go away.
Good.
Yeah, but I don't want to see piles of dirt there for years either.
We'll talk about during construction itself.
Well, yeah, but I'm, I'm talking after construction. I don't want the dirt to just sit there.
Moving down the list, I've got the, the escalation costs, I'd listed as a, the whole number. Like I said, we could probably reduce that by half if this, if the project stays on schedule, on its current schedule.
Who bears responsibility for staying on schedule?
With, so right now, we have a, a date of, I believe it's November 10th, for us to be complete with our pre-construction services. And that time, we, we, our expect, our expectation is to have our GMP approved by then. So if, if we stay on that schedule, it's, it's Garnie and Dewberry and the town working together to make sure we're staying on that schedule with the final documents, and then that, that final pricing exercise, which is, we'll be working on from now until we get the GMP. So there's some things, for example, to help us stay on schedule, we've got a outreach, a contractor outreach list that's set up, probably do a, just a, we just call them work sessions, but just calling people up and talking about, talking to them about schedule. Here's our master schedule, here's the, the work elements that go into the project, and getting interest, just getting contractors' interest for the project. This helps us stay on schedule.
And the contractors themselves are held liable for the schedule once they sign up to do the work?
They, they are held to the schedule, we hold them to the schedule, once we get under construction.
Setting aside external circumstances, force majeure, that, that sort of stuff?
Yes.
Because I mean, if we can save the residents nearly a million dollars by staying on schedule, seems like that would be a priority, no?
Yes.
So I know a lot of people in the construction business, and there's, there's actually no more schedule policies, no more for electricians or anyone. They're like, it is what it is, you take it or you leave it. And they're like months and months out.
Great point. That's why we do this early. You know, there's, I think there's enough, there's enough content in this, in this project to get a, we've already got metal building contractors. I know of two that can meet our schedule of, I think it's early summer next year for metal building. Masons, I think I have 10 masons. We don't have a large masonry project, that's actually going to help us a little bit. Electricians, the big, the big thing with electrical right now is the procurement. So your contractors aren't going to sign up to the schedule because your switchgear's a year and a half out.
Right.
So I, yeah, you're exactly right.
How is that with metal buildings and mason materials?
Masonry's good. Metal building, the biggest, the biggest, I guess, schedule item with the metal building is the galvanizing, because it has to go to, there's only a few firms that'll, that'll dip it. You know, I think Rocky Mountain in Denver can do it, there's a place in Houston. I think there's a small place in, in Junction, but I don't think they, they dip. But that just costs, that just takes time, right? Knowing that now, getting these, these contractors on board, telling, telling them, we're going to have final documents on this date, here's what we need pricing. So it's bringing them into the process, but also bringing them into the schedule. Because when you, when you come to work on the project, you're signing up to the schedule too.
Right.
Yeah. So back to the list, we've got a couple items, potholing. We had a lot of potholing in the estimate, it's pretty standard. When we, when we go find a line, we pothole it. I think we had it in a couple of different places, so that's an easy one to pull out. Testing compaction and subgrade prep, again, that was doubled up in one of the assemblies. And then the, the items in yellow, this is what I was just talking about, you know, getting, get some local, some good local representation with dirt, with, you know, class one structural, backfill material. If we can't use the backfill material that's out there, we need to find some. Flag doesn't have it, they use it, so we'd have to go a little further away. So again, that's just some areas of opportunity to look at for saving money. Landscaping, we talked a little bit about that last week. We have $126,686 in there for landscaping. So we're going to work with the town, we're going to find the right solution. If we got to plant some trees and paint some rocks, that's what we'll do. But we'll make sure we get the right, the right amount of landscaping to meet the city's code and intend on the project. Again, going further down in, in the yellow shades, you know, finding a good, a good concrete sub, masonry sub, roofing sub. A little further down, we had some double ups on, on painting coatings. Painting the, a galvanized, pre-engineered metal building for 40 grand, didn't think we needed that. The bridge crane we had, that we, we priced was painted, pre-painted, so we were able to take those funds out, that money out. Equipment storage, that was just a, there was a, a number four instead of a one, so that's, you know, pulling 60 grand out of there right now. And then the bridge crane, that was something we talked about, just easy pickings. If, if we don't need it, it's easy to pull, easy enough to pull out of there. So again, this is a, this, we call this our value engineering log. This is a start, and as we meet weekly, we're going to be reviewing this. I've got, like I said earlier, I've got a couple other things highlighted on my estimate that we'll get with Dewberry on, and, and see how we can whittle this thing down.
Toby, for general conditions, it has an amount of over $2 million?
Mm-hmm.
It's very broad. So can you elaborate on that line item?
Sure.
And also the site work and demo item, and process equipment, those three items from the sheet?
Okay. The, the general conditions works out to about 11 and a half percent of the project, of the, of the 19 million. And that's right in line with-
And what is it?
General conditions?
Yep.
It's the management of the project.
Got it.
That, that has your project managers, your project engineer, your superintendent, field engineer, surveying, portlets, office trailer-
Field offices, right?
Pardon?
Field offices.
Field offices, yep. Everything to, to administer the project onsite, management, and we call it plant equipment.
Okay, thank you. And then I think next one, that I personally wanted to be explained a little bit more for my own benefit and thought process, was site work and demo. And, and I do want to say something about process equipment after, but yeah, the next one, site work and demo.
Okay. Well, the site work, site work and demo, that's everything, it's, we call it division two, if you're CSI, or if you're the 16 division. It's everything dirt. It's excavating the, the, excavating and backfilling the structure. It's demoing everything around, cleaning the site, clearing the site. We call it clearing and grubbing, hauling, hauling excess foil, hauling demolition mater- demoed material. The big number in there is dewatering. We need to dewater the site, because we're going to be digging down about 15 feet. So, and I think dirt waters down about three and a half feet?
Something like that.
Something like that, three and a half, four feet. So that's, that's a big number. And then the demolition, we have dollars in here to demo the existing plate settler structure, and the plate settlers that are out there, because we have to, we're putting a generator in that area. Okay?
Then my next question, maybe Trey answered it a few days ago. Will you be working directly with Trey as you are contracting those companies, and he'll be in charge of making the decisions on pricing and who you are contracting? Will you have any control over pricing on equipment? It looks like in total equipment, process equipment, which I can understand, a pricing?
Big number.
Exactly. But if we can be shopping for, you know, better-
That process equipment is actually the equipment that is going to treat the water.
Okay.
So that-
The two settlers?
Huh?
The two big settlers? Not necessarily.
Yeah, the two big, the two big things we're putting in that's actually going to clean the water, so it meets state standards. That's the process equipment. And there's only two or three that make the ballast and flax system, so we've talked to all of them.
Okay.
And the pricing that is in here, it's, it's not their best pricing, it was budget pricing. And Dewberry had already solicited these, these companies for pricing without specifications.
Was it an RFP that was sent out, and this company came at a better rate?
This was a different, our, this was before we started the process. And they were just looking to put their budget together. And I think, so I used those same numbers. So when we, when we put, when we're putting the budget together at 90%, those numbers are going to be refined, that process equipment.
So Toby, I think maybe I'll, so we're developing specifications-
Do you need to be near the microphone?
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
So, prior to procurement, we'll have specifications developed, that detail of all the minutia of how these processes are supposed to be wired, pulled together, expectations of performance, guarantees, et cetera. And Toby's will take those and go to the different companies and solicit quotes from there, that'll then be fed back to the project team, but we can-
Control, accept, deny? Okay, I like to hear that.
You guys haven't picked out a specific company for the process control?
Controls? For the process equipment.
Equipment, I mean, I'm sorry.
Not a specific company.
Oh, you have already?
We have.
We've got, there's only, they only have a couple that make some of this equipment.
Oh, okay.
So like-
And are they saying it's-
And are they saying it's, we should be able to get them if we needed?
Sam, correct me if I'm wrong, but both of them that we spoke to, I think they're having sixteen to twenty-four week lead times after submittal, so.
That's not bad, that's plenty of time, right, for, by the time we get our building started to?
Yeah.
Get into equipment.
Yeah, there wasn't much of the process equipment that was a, an overly long.
Right.
Lead, lead time.
VFDs or anything for pumps are not needed, or?
We do have some VFDs.
Yeah, because we're having a hard time getting VFDs up there for, for pumps and things, I don't know if that's going to be for, but it seems to be, we have a long enough time give them, you know, to give them for that.
I think most of the VFDs that you're, that, that.
And just for my own sake, VA, can you say the acronym, can, what is it?
Variable Frequency Drive.
Thank you, very technical term. Actually, we had a public comment last time and the public was asking us if we could use, um, you know, not so much acronyms because. It just, that, I'm just asking because I'm asking myself what that is, so, yes, okay.
It's an instrument that allows us to ramp a pump or a blower up or down speed, basically. Most of the time they like to run at a constant speed, but with that, we can speed it up or slow it down.
But yeah, go on to the question, you're answering him, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine, you're fine. The, uh, the VFDs for the, for the majority of the equipment are with the equipment. So if they're telling us sixteen to twenty-eight weeks, that includes the VFD.
Yes, and then the last one on that same sheet is the fifteen percent contain- contingency. Uh, can you go over, again, another acronym, the SRF requirement, scope increase and register, risk register? And based on a project, this price, you know, like, that could be fifteen percent, it's pretty steep.
It's very steep. Well, SRF is the, uh, state revolving fund.
Got it.
They're, they're who we're looking to get our money from. And when we bid a project that is governed by SRF rules, they have certain requirements.
Got it.
So we, when we bid the project, we, we can't tell the contractor, okay, it's going to be SRF, but you have to make up your own, because of the, the wage determination changes, um, there's a lot of variables. So we just add dollars in the contingency line until we can bid this, uh, at the ninety percent GMP level. And then scope increase, we're not going to have a scope increase, right Trey?
No.
Okay, good. That's for, um, that's if we wanted to put two bridge cranes in, which I, I just heard that Trey doesn't need. And risk register, um, this goes to what Sam was just talking about with the electrical. A risk register is if, um, a risk, risk register item is if we, if we specify a certain piece of equipment, a certain, um, uh, process that we can get cheaper or we can get from a different vendor, that would be, that would be a, that's just an example of, one example of something that would be on the risk register. And we would have to decide as a team, okay, here's where our budget is, but we really want this piece, but here's what it's going to cost. It's just to, to weigh that, that difference, so everybody sees it.
A may come in four weeks, but it costs twenty thousand dollars, but B comes in forty weeks and it's two thousand dollars.
Which happens a lot.
Which one do you want?
Right.
The last question.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so subtotal as sixty percent and then you're saying that, you know, this would get to a ninety percent, explain that so I can understand it well. Is that a potential, the estimate to steal thirty, uh, thirty percent out or the estimate?
The estimate, so there's, there's.
Until you get to the ninety percent, what's that, thirty percent?
The thirty percent is just finishing the design. So we've, what Duberry has done, and you could probably explain this better.
Thank you, Pat.
All right. Great question. It is. So when we're designing things, right, we start with all the big decisions, as we go through the project, the decisions get smaller and smaller towards the implications of things. Actually, at the sixty percent level, we have most of the major big things all defined, but there are some things that are still out there, maybe some small piping changes or valving changes. But things that we still have to work through to make sure coordination between like HVAC and electrical so that we can actually get them working together in the same space and not everything trying to cram through a one twelve inch hole or something like that. So we're at that stage where all the big things are defined, but we got to do the coordination now and get down all the small details to make sure that, one, it'll pass the regulatory requirements and two, we're not running, the different disciplines won't run into each other.
So that, that thirty percent, that was a great explanation. But really for, for us, when we're estimating a project, it's the, it's, they're not the big piece. We see the building, we see the concrete, we see the dirt. It's the things that always come last, the electrical and the HVAC, the, the ventilating and air conditioning. And then like, like Pat said, it's the, the small valves and piping runs and things that, you know, we can't account for, but we just put a budget in there for them.
Okay.
So Sam made it familiar, it's one of the big things we'll be doing is like verifying all the cross connection stuff to make sure we supply, we conform to all the CDPHD design criteria.
Right, define details. So apparently sixty, uh, sixty percent design is okay for the loan process? Is that standard pretty much, you have to have sixty percent for the loan or, or is there, you don't have to have any?
So there's, when we're doing an alternative delivery project, sixty percent is sufficient because we've got a contractor on board. That, to, to be clear though, when we finalize the design, all those documents will be going in the CDPHD for final approval. Work enough to get the loan application going and have everything approved, and all that is contingent upon a final approved set of plans. What they have said, we just spoke to them last week, is that everything looks good, that what you're doing will work and that we've got to work through the details, so we feel very confident about that. But cross contact, cross connections is one of the big things they get worried about over Delta Department.
While everybody else is thinking, one of the things that came up earlier today was a conversation we had, uh, from a value engineering standpoint about uh, reducing our, uh, skids from one to point seven five in a way, as a way to save money. And can you guys talk a little bit about that, um, that analysis and where we ended up on that? You remember what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
Okay.
From an equip, from an equipment perspective, when we draw, so we're buying these different processes and where you can buy them in different capacity levels. And, um, we initially looked at one MG in order to meet all the design criteria and help push the, the, the town off in the future. We've also looked at going to point seven five and capacity skids, meaning you'd likely have to add a third one quicker. The cost difference from, uh, an equipment perspective is about two hundred thousand dollars, I forget the number, but it's right around two hundred thousand dollars. We can also knock off about four feet off the building, which now that we have the cost model together, we can actually pull together that number, but if I had to wager, it's, it's not millions, no. So.
What was the cost?
It was two hundred thousand just from an equipment perspective.
So a net savings of four hundred?
No, 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 a net saving of two hundred.
One hundred thousand per skid, or per piece.
I remember that, the, the presentation.
Yep.
And we decided that was not even, I mean, not practical to save that much amount for.
Because the cost of adding that third later on is going to be much greater than what we're at.
Six MGD?
Yeah.
Right?
But we'd also have more people to help pay for it. And possibly more commercial development.
For two hundred thousand dollars.
Two hundred thousand dollars over the life of the loan is nothing compared to that.
Exactly.
That's not even, you won't even see a price change in their monthly payment, I'll think.
Yeah, I'd rather stick at the one MGD than the, go down to point seven five.
And the savings on not having to go down for additional feed is also not significant?
No, it'd be shrinking the length of the building.
Laterally.
Yeah.
Versus depth, got it.
A quick question, you said the general conditions, the two point two four, the two point two two four million, or, yeah, was, um, the, that's design, engineering and all of that stuff?
No, that's just, just construction, project management.
Okay, because then in the total project, there's two point four million, that's design, engineering, construction management. So you're paying for construction management in two different spots for a total of almost four million, or?
The engineering will take part of some aspects of the design because we still have to verify when this is all done. We have to certify to the state that it was built per the plans and specifications. So we've got to do enough work during the construction process to put our licenses at risk to verify that it was done.
Because this was, as the mayor would say, the two point five six plus the two point four magically comes to that twenty-eight million dollar number we've been talking about this whole time. And that would be, that would be his exact, pretty much, thing I would think. These guys, I've heard him say it pretty much every meeting we've had.
Well, I, I think what I would say to that, um, is I think, uh, Pat and his team put together a pretty solid estimate.
He's did a good job estimating at the beginning.
Initially.
Very good beginning.
I mean, that's because we were all a little surprised, um, it's, you don't, you don't estimate to a number, you estimate a number, right? So it's, um, we, uh, yeah, and it was easy enough to, we did not go through and, and play with any numbers. It was basically, it was just practical, um, you know, cost history. I just did a, uh, just bought a building permit for two hundred grand for a similar project, but it wasn't here, it was in the metro area. And it was, had a lot more fees to it. So, yeah, I think, uh, like I said, I think the, uh, the initial cost estimate was probably, was very solid.
Is there more to the presentation from other people, or are we up for discussion, or?
Yeah, this is the time to have a conversation, so if you guys have more questions.
I didn't know if more people were coming out with some information or whatever.
Well, uh, to, uh, to be clear, uh, in the public session, we're going to go through the entire, um, presentation. That, all that, how we got here and all that stuff too, uh, since we'll be hopefully talking to more folks from the public. But we, we don't, we're, we're kind of on your clock right now for the next twelve minutes. So, uh, whatever question, and, and then of course in the regular meeting, you will still be able to ask whatever questions you need to do. We'll spend as much time as we need to tonight.
These numbers make sense and, uh, definitely trying to, uh, budget engineers is the way to go. I still haven't seen any PowerPoint or anything about how the citizens are going to afford this. I don't know, that's why I was waiting, I was, thought maybe someone else would come out with some more ideas that I asked for last time to get like, for the, for, so the town, maybe like, ideas such as the town tightening its belt and putting more money to the original costs upfront so we can lower the price a dollar later for the citizens, just like, I haven't seen anything like that, I don't know if that's even.
Well, I mentioned earlier that we've got, um, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars budgeted this year for a public works project that we're going to see if we can get a grant for.
Get a grant for.
Obviously, that's not a done deal.
Right.
And those grants are very competitive, but, um, you know, we are thinking that way.
So then another idea I had, which is, I mean, these ideas are probably just off the wall. So on this, uh, sheet here, minimum to sustain current operation. So this forty-three dollars came about when we separated the wastewater from the water. That's how we found out that the water wasn't making enough money to sustain itself. So what if we brought those two entities back together, eliminate the forty-three dollar deed and have a twenty dollar new water plant?
Or not, for, maybe not even, I wouldn't say eliminate the forty-three dollars, because if we eliminated, you're going to be digging a hole.
But I guess, I guess what's.
Because we have a wastewater plant we have to pay for eventually too, but I could see reducing that amount and maybe incrementally getting there instead of doing it all at once, so it's not a forty-three dollar increase this year. It's a thirty dollar, a twenty dollar increase, then another ten dollars, then the other ten dollars to get us to that point without doing it all at once. Is that an option, or do we not have that option, Jim?
The, the issue is going to be, when we get to the actual bond issuance, we are going to have to show that, there are two things that we have to show. Number one, for the, uh, the authority, we have to show that we have one-ten coverage on the payments of the bonds. But because you have an existing obligation outstanding, we have to put these bonds on parity with the existing obligation and the coverage test for, uh, issuing additional debt is one-twenty. So it's a little higher than the minimum that the authority, uh, requires. We can make that up and show the, uh, the coverage at the end of the day utilizing both the sewer and the water revenues. Um, I would caution that you don't want to skinny things up too much because you'll run the risk of not being able to maintain the system and operate the system the way you need to. Um, but yes, that is something that ultimately could be looked at if the board directed us that they wanted to see that number, you know, reduced and then slowly work up to it, and we'd have to figure out a way to do that. But the, the bottom line is, when we get to the point where we're issuing the debt, we have to meet certain coverage test requirements and that's going to require, uh, user rates that provide enough capital coming into the system, uh, to provide the excess that they're going to require.
And that's my biggest thing too, you know, the nineteen dollars for the water plant, yeah, that's fine, but all of a sudden forty-three dollars? And it's like, you know, we just now kind of discovered this? I mean, how come the town wasn't, you know, actively, you know, paying attention to these numbers, you know?
Think going back and just applicant to the future.
It was paid attention to, we had brought this to you a couple of years ago, maybe four years ago with Michael Arian.
I wasn't on board four years ago.
Rates and, um, tap fees because of these, um, issues and you chose not to.
So what I'm, what I'm trying to do is exhaust all options of giving the citizens a reasonable cost wa- water bill. That's all I'm trying to do, you know, I'm, I've been playing hard nose for a while. These are just ideas that, is, so is there any way to rob Peter to pay Paul? You know, is there any other creative ideas we can do to take the burden off our citizens?
Well, one of the things is.
That's what we should be doing.
Kind of like what Sam said, as if by reducing that amount a little bit now, if we're going with Derek's idea of waiting to do something addition because we don't want more people then, is at that point, when we make those adjustments, we're not going to have to do it maybe quite as much because we're going to have more users.
I, I like Sam's idea about a scheduled rate increase, instead of doing forty-three now, can we spread it out over three or five years? So it's an increment of that forty-three. I think that's incredibly valuable, there's a lot of new developments that are being done. We can work on upping the rates for bulk water and things of that nature. I'm a hundred percent aligned with you, Sam, we need to reduce, minimize the pain on the, what was it, thirteen hundred people? The town population is thirty-six hundred, but in terms of payers, it's thirteen hundred people. So that's, that's a small number of people to pay eighteen million dollars.
As, what I am understanding from what Jim is saying is that for the loan to take place, it needs to have like justifiable amount that we are charging for it to be paid back, is that right, Jim?
That is correct, um, we have to, I mean, we have to meet certain tests that there's adequate resources coming into the utility. That is correct. Uh, we have to, I mean, we have to meet certain tests that there's adequate resources coming into the utility. Um, you do have a combined pledge right now, uh, with the existing obligation that is outstanding that is between the sewer and the water utility. Um, we have all along been suggesting that you really need to separate the two, uh, from an operational standpoint so you can see whether, you know, the water enterprise is, you know, covering its nut and the sewer enterprise is covering its nut. Um, ultimately, you wanna be in a position where both those enterprises are taking care of themselves. Can we co-mingle some of those dollars at this point? That is certainly something that if directed, we could explore, um, a- and, and see what we can do. But we, again, need to make certain that adequate dollars are being generated through the rate base to pay for the operations and the debt service.
Jim, would a scheduled increase cover that requirement? If, if we go up to, to Sam's point, if we went up fifteen dollars per year for three years, if the board made some sort of a commitment to do that? Or whatever the number is over time.
Same to forty-three dollars.
If we had an approved schedule to increase the rates up to forty-three-
Fifteen more dollars the next year.
Over three to five years.
So it gets that forty-three.
Does that meet our legal and fiscal requirements to get the loan?
Uh, that would have to be a conversation that we would have with power, uh, the authority. Whether they would accept-
I think you'd wanna-
A structure like that. I mean, we, I have done a similar structure like that for another community. Um, it took the authority a little to get used to that concept, but it was a small project amount. It wasn't a, you know, twenty million dollar borrowing. It was a sub-three million dollar project that we were doing for that community. But it is certainly something that we could further explore with the authority. But to do that, we're in a position where we really need to submit the application so they start talking to us about what we can and can't do.
So I have a question. So you're saying for the financing, it has to go up this forty-three? So even if, say the town didn't need any projects or, you know, any additional funding? So you're saying it would still have to go up forty-three regardless of?
You have to prove that this is gonna make its money.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
For the water plant.
It's currently insolvent.
Yeah.
Business, it's def, I understand for sure that it has to happen.
Yeah, that, that was my question, you know, so if everything was good, we'd still have to do the forty-three?
Yes.
You should.
If you want to.
You haven't had to because no one was looking over at you. It's like getting a loan, that's when the man's looking, looking at you closely and, um, and you have to clean all this stuff up. So I think if you wanna, we can get creative, first, I'm Jim New, Town Attorney, stepping in for Mike Sawyer, who's healing, just seeing you on the little screen. But, um, they really wanna see this enterprise, which is your water enterprise, uh, be self-sufficient and then with, with all, with current operations, but if they weren't looking, you guys should have been doing the forty-three dollars, which you already said. Why didn't we know?
Yeah.
So anyways, we're catching up.
I'm still unhappy over the fact that we haven't taken care of the forty-three dollars, you know, years ago.
And then you have the new plant, but I think to get creative is because if you're blending your water and sewer, then I think since no one's looking at your sewer right now, then that might give you the rob Peter to pay Paul type of situation. Um, I'm, I'm totally jumping in on the financing piece. I've been watching the contracts, I know where you're at. But that, I mean, there could be some creativity, but we're gonna, you're gonna need this loan way too soon to slowly ratchet this up on the water.
And if the approval happens tonight, it doesn't obligate us to actually take the loan? It does, however, facilitate those discussions that, that Jim and, and you are also referring to to get those answers and to get creative with our financing.
So I know this board has put a lot of emphasis on getting more officers for the safety of our community. Our biggest threat to all the citizens is water. That, uh, towns die and get cancer and sick. The whole community gets sick. So that's how important this water issue has always been to me from the beginning. And it's something that needs to happen. That's where I'm torn out with the twenty-one million dollar price.
I think it's important to say that our water isn't unsafe currently. We're not giving people cancer in those things.
Yes, exactly.
But it's a budgetary conversation.
It's all state compliance.
The budgetary thing-
I drink it every day.
Yeah, the budgetary thing though of where the law enforcement part of the budget comes out of versus the water, wastewater is completely separate. It doesn't have anything to do with each other.
No, but I mean-
We can't use the funds that we used to pay for that.
This board has put emphasis on protecting our community, is what that statement was meant for.
Yeah, I understand exactly what you're saying.
This is protecting our citizens, this is protecting, uh, future citizens, past citizens, the citizens that have been here that, my friends and family that are here. It's that twenty-eight million dollars that I'm trying to swallow, pill.
So we've only got two minutes till our regularly scheduled meeting is supposed to start. Should we call an end to this discussion? We can continue it during the public, part of the board meeting?
But the discussion can't.
And I was planning on talking about the forty-three dollars anyway, so it's, it's good timing. But is, is everybody else okay with that? If we call an end to the work session so that folks can do what you gotta do to get ready for the regular board session?
So do we?
Yeah, no, that's fine. So, no mayor tonight?